Plus another thirty percent for the administrative overhead.
Right.
No, yes, that's administrative overhead.
Well, so is yours. Your fee includes it. There's no additional.
Oh, well, I didn't. No doubt. So I didn't have... Okay. So we'll just direct staff. There's no motion for me.
For those two, we'll come back again with those two things.
There's no...
We'll return the ad hoc to the council at a future meeting.
Exactly. Okay, so item number twenty-one. And I appreciate the members of the audience residents waiting until this time. And it was really because we did put it later on the agenda. And in case other members of the public wanted to come specifically for that, I didn't want to bring it up closer to the earlier part of the meeting. So the staff report is pursuant to the city manager's employment agreement. In April 2013, the city conducted a six-month performance appraisal of the city manager. And then we established an ad hoc committee to meet with the city manager to discuss the results of the performance appraisal and discuss any proposed revisions to the manager's employment agreement. I've asked that this employment agreement be put on this agenda to discuss any potential changes in the city manager's contract pursuant to our six-month performance evaluation, which was had made by staff and council members. And council reviewed those evaluations in closed session in April seventeenth. There was unanimous agreement that the city manager was doing a, per the matrix of evaluations, a satisfactory job and instructed the ad hoc committee of the vice mayor and the mayor to meet with the city manager to discuss the evaluations, which we did. And then to further meet and discuss compensation adjustments and the housing issue. The vice mayor and mayor had met. We reviewed the compensation packages of all the San Mateo County city managers, which I have copies of that I can distribute to our council members if they want to take a look at that. No, okay. Did you have it?
Got it. We'll hand it over.
You have that one? Okay. So of the... This is a spreadsheet of all the San Mateo County salaries of city managers. It's a survey. Should I know what you're saying?
What... Madam Mayor, the question was... The question was, do we have to provide this information to the public? And the answer is, if the information is available ahead of the meeting to the council, we have to provide it ahead of the meeting. But since it's provided at the meeting, then we have to provide it immediately after the meeting is over. Now, I don't mind sharing my copy if the members of the public would have passed it around and take a look at it.
I have an extra copy.
Oh, that's fine.
And as you can see from that summary, if you look at the cities that are more comparable to the town of Atherton, such as Hillsborough, Wasato's Hills, Woodside, Forteau Valley, the Atherton city manager's compensation is, even with the travel allowance, is on par. It's below the majority of them, with the town of Forteau Valley being the one that's just a little bit less. So the travel allowance that is indicated... So at this time, one of the issues that we are talking about is in June of 2013, next month, the travel allowance per the contract goes away. And it was anticipated that the city manager would be receiving a direct benefit of moving into the house at Holbrook Palmer Park at a valuation of $5,000 a month. So in that regard, the $2,500 travel allowance would have effectively been doubled as a compensation factor at that time when he moved into the house as a value, as part of his compensation, overall compensation package. Personal, as we know, personal circumstances are precluding him from being able to move into the house. We've heard from the city attorney that requiring the city manager as a condition of his employment to live in the house is unconstitutional. It is not something that is apparently necessary for his job performance because for the last six months or so, he has been doing his job in what many council members felt was an above-average, above-satisfactory performance rate and overall satisfaction. If you looked at the staff evaluations, the staff gave the city manager's performance evaluation very, very high marks, top of the list, second to the top of the list, excellent and above-average satisfaction. So when we narrow the field to cities and towns of similar size to Atherton, it appears that when we look at the travel allowance going away in June and the cap on the health and dental of $750 and the cellphone allowance of $100, his monthly compensation becomes very much lower than the other comparable cities. So it is proposed by the ad hoc committee to the council that the proposed salary increase, which effectively is a salary reduction when you actually look at it, is to increase the base salary to add in the $2,500 a month, which is $30,000, to the base salary of $160,000. So the base salary would be $190,000. You delete the $933 of PERS and because of the salary and benefit resolution that council passed for non-represented employees makes the employee make their contribution to PERS. Then what we have is the reduction in salary to $170,000. Let me think about this. One second. Right, to the fifteen. So... $190 minus the... So it's $190 times $750. I thought I had done all of this. I think it's an effective salary reduction of $5,748 a year. And that's my recommendation. Let me just double check this.
Yeah, let's... We got the finance director over there whizzing away.
Is he?
I was writing down the bridge.
So if we do the $190,000 plus... Take away the... $750 times 12 equals... Okay, $9,000.
This still has $933.
Just before July one. Oh, that's what it is. So there'd be one month, right? There's one month in June before the July first reduction in the PERS contribution by the town. So that would be $210,000 a year versus the current of $211,000. So that's $1,200. That's $1,200 less a year. Because of the phone.
Eleven, $196, and the number would be 178-804.
Right, right. So but then in July... What's being proposed is... Do you want to say?
Sure, I could perhaps summarize, listening to the conversation. You're proposing changing the base salary from $160 to $190 for the year, beginning July first, eliminating the travel allowance, of course, because that's gone July first, eliminating the phone allowance, and taking the $750. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bill. Changing the base salary from $160 to $190, eliminating the $2,500 a month.
Travel.
Travel allowance effective July first. Eliminating the phone allowance. Keep capping the health and dental envision, just like other employees, at the $750 per month for myself. And then the pension pickup would be... I would be responsible for that July first per contract, just like all the other employees as well.
I get the number 177-604.
On the pension pickup, it's about seven percent for the year. It's $13,300 on the salary.
Okay, because the number that was kicked out here was 933 for $11,196.
Right.
But the benefits are the same for everybody else.
Right, the benefits are the same for everybody else.
When we changed the benefits...
Right.
When we changed the benefits...
It goes July first.
They were applicable to you anyway, weren't they?
On July first.
On July first.
Unless the government...
When you presented the package to us in January, what the activity would associate with that package was applicable to you.
All benefits and burdens, correct.
But it doesn't take effect until July first.
Yes, of course, and there's a three percent raise in there. On top of that, which equates to a $5,000 increase. So instead of... He's currently earning really effectively $160,000. He's really earning $164,800 at this point in time.
No, 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 because it doesn't...
As it kicks in, so...
Right, July first.
But when you're doing your 333, we kind of got apples to apples on this chart because your 13333 is $160,000.
Correct.
And then you're talking about, well, but we're going to cap them and we're going to ask them to pay for stuff. That's all happening in July, but we're giving them three percent on top of that. So anyway, so there's another $5,000 going in. And you keep calling it a transportation allowance, but at the same time, even in the contract, it says transportation and temporary allowance and temporary living expenses, which since I was the one who actually put this together with Mr. Mauder, that aspect of it was for... He was going to have to sell a house and then his fiancee...
Well, let's not get into that. That's not... I just want to say, I just want to correct you right here.
We'll bring it up later.
I'm going to correct you because you said it's a $5,000 increase and it's not. And at that...
It's a salary increase. I realize it was a trade that we did.
But it's overall a salary decrease from what he's currently being paid. His take-home. It's currently a $5,748 effective salary reduction at the $190 less the PERS contribution, including the three and a half percent salary adjustment and the $750 for the health and dental. No cellphone. It's a $70,000 monthly, $205,000 annual. And that is a $5,748 effective reduction.
$190.
Yes.
Okay, so do you want my comments or do you want...
Of course, I want your comments.
Okay, all right, so... So my comments are this. Okay, first off...
As long as they stay on point and don't...
Well, I think that they are staying on point. I am trying to do my best to stay on point. So to comment on the compensation, the housing, quote-unquote, temporary housing allowance wasn't just a transportation allowance. And in fact, the issue is the transportation. It'd be cheaper for us to buy a brand-new car and give him a car at the price that the chief was buying cars. He could drive one of our brand-new police cars. We'll buy a third one, of course. And that'd be a heck of a lot cheaper at $17,000 or $18,000 than giving him $30,000 a year, plus the PERS cost that goes on top of that. Now, my comments were, since I was the guy who actually sat down with the city manager and negotiated this, you know, he brought up the fact that he was going to have to move and there was going to be costs associated with moving. Because, you know, if he were to come down here and move into the house, he didn't need to have two houses. And on top of that, he was going to have to move himself. We weren't going to send a moving van up there, et cetera. There are costs associated with it. So we agreed to these temporary costs. And at the time, there was a lot of consternation by the part of several other council members on this, on the fact that, well, you know, it's going to be a long drive. We really want him to move down here. If we have a disaster, we want to make sure that we have somebody here local. Doesn't necessarily need to be in the area. But, you know, across the river, across the bay, could be a problem. But there was concern. It says, we want to make sure he's going to move down here and move down here sooner rather than later. Now suddenly, it doesn't seem to matter. To me, that's befuddling. As I mentioned, what the stipend was for. I know that circumstances may have changed, but circumstances change for all of us on a regular basis. And that doesn't mean somebody has to compensate us for it. If the issue is going to be travel, I recommend we buy him a car or we buy a city manager a car and give him use for it. But I don't see a need for that personally. And I think that the whole thing is kind of surprising and giving somebody a $30,000 raise, which is essentially 20% raise after six months on the job, I think is outrageous. And that's how I feel. I cannot support this. I will not support it. I vote against it.
Madam Mayor, can I say if I can bring this back in? First of all, I appreciate Councilmember Widmer's position on this.
Into the mic, please.
I thought it was. I appreciate Councilmember Widmer's comments and thoughts on this. However, I would point out, as a matter of law, and I know Mr. Widmer knows this well, it doesn't matter what you think you negotiated. The only thing that matters is what you put on the paper. It does not have in there any moving allowance at all.
No, but it doesn't say transportation. It says housing and travel.
Well, what it says on mine...
Temporary housing and travel.
What it says on mine is a temporary monthly living and travel allowance, which is rather nebulous. And as the person that drafted it, I never had a housing allowance in there. And the housing allowance, per se, was paragraph eight, wherein there was a housing...
I was commenting, Bill, that the comment being made by the mayor was, it's a travel allowance.
Now, I'm trying to get past that. From what I hear the ad hoc committee suggesting, unfortunately, we're sitting here tonight. The mayor took the base salary and said she suggested it'd be $190,000. And then there were takeaways. Well, you know, we don't have to calculate the takeaways tonight because they're automatic. They were already approved by the city council. And as Robert just said, the mayor, I think throughout the number 933 a month per PERS, it's not. It's a little more than that. And the number's not $11,000. It's like $13,000. And so that would be automatic. And I think what you should focus on is the contract at hand. And that is, if you want to change the base salary to $190, then change it to $190. If you want to take out the temporary, the $2,500 travel fee and the cellular phone fee and the housing allowance, then take them out. And then number nine says basically that he gets benefits consistent with the other unrepresented employees. That automatically reduces, on the one hand, to include the $13,000 of PERS and the health caps and the health cap that actually went down. But to be fair, if you're using the formula used for the other people, there would be a three percent raise July first.
That's correct. So it puts the effective salary. I realize, and you'll remember that during our discussion at that time, that's not binding. It's reviewed on an annual basis and the city council can check. However, the raise is binding and it will stay binding from the day it's given.
No, this is a contract. If you don't...
No, I'm saying, but what we agreed, what we agreed in January was they had done an analysis and said, you know, basically over a three-year period of time, we think that, you know, the city actually makes out slightly better because people will be contributing more. And when you take the cost of money back, et cetera, et cetera, we're giving them some money now and essentially it's going to be, quote-unquote, paid back because they're going to be picking up their portion. However, we did discuss that at the time, though, is that the raise will be binding, but the other items are going to be reviewed on an annual basis. In fact, we even said that today during the review on the police contract, that annually, we will be looking at...
Correct.
Okay, so those can be changed.
Well, let me see if I can clarify that because... This is a legal issue that could impact you fiscally and going forward. The unrepresented employees, because they're unrepresented, don't have a multi-year agreement and you can't. So you have a resolution every year. There's nothing that says next year, you can't give them a raise. Yet there's nothing that says you will give them a raise. All this says is that this contract says the city manager gets a base salary. We've taken out some of the fringe benefits that were in it tonight. That's the proposal, is to take out the fringe benefits. However, he still gets the same basic benefit package, if it's up or down, that the other employees get. And now, all we've heard tonight, and I think the mayor's point is, all those benefits, the costs have gone up, which essentially drives his take-home pay down. Now, the proposal tonight is to do away with the benefit of the house. And I know the mayor made a, at the time, made a comment about that was worth $5,000 a month and therefore this was a very fair number at $160.
For everybody but the taxpayer, who are still paying for the house.
If you take it out of the equation, the house comes back to the town and can be re-rented, reused somehow as the town sees fit, either to make revenue or not make revenue. But the point being, I'm just trying to draw... As a guy who's going to draft a contract, if you start with a base number and then... And take out the things you want to take out, all those other things are going to happen as a matter of... Just implementing the math. Robert's going to do the math and come up with exact numbers and change ultimately what his take-home is. It just starts with a base number. That's all that's really important here in taking out the other parts. If that's what you want to do.
I don't disagree with anything you said. Thank you.
Councilmembers, Dan.
Sure, no problem.
Yes, thank you very much, Bill. Karen.
Bill, can I just have you go over the actuals again? I've heard multiple. Just run by the numbers so that we have it accurately.
I'm going to do my best.
Thank you.
The mayor's, the ad hoc committee, as I understand it, suggested that the base salary be adjusted from $160 to $190. That's the important number. And then taking out the temporary living and travel expense of $2,500 a month. That's gone. Also taking out the cellphone cost of $100 a month. That's gone. Turning to number eight, housing, that whole paragraph is deleted. Number nine still says in, which says, direct the agreement, term of the agreement, anything that the unrepresented employees get, the city manager gets. That's pretty common to keep what they call the spread so that you don't have other management employees ultimately making more money than the guy that's in charge of everything. Now, when you do that, I don't have the exact... What I do, what I think is a pretty close number. It's about $183,000.
Bill, if I may, on the $190,000, if you add in the three and a half percent, it comes out to $196,650. Then the seven percent based on PERS contribution is about $13,765. So you just subtract that from the $196. It's about $182,84.
And then you subtract the $2,500 a month?
Or that's not even included.
Okay.
Because we're just taking the $160 up to $190.
And then there was... There is a cap, there would be a cap on health that would also drive that down. I don't know how much.
Right.
A few hundred a month, maybe.
It depends on the plan and that would be more out of his pocket, depends on the plan, whatever it is.
In that range.
So the effect of is a salary reduction as all of our residents, Atherton residents, all of our employees, unrepresented employees have taken an effective net take-home pay salary reduction because they are now going to be, effective July one, contributing to their PERS account. And so, I mean, I think that's very fair. I think what Councilmember continues to not acknowledge is that the value of the house that was offered to other city managers in the past was made an integral part of their compensation package. I was on the ad hoc committee with Councilmember Dobbie when we reviewed a former city manager's compensation package who was very unhappy with his very low amount of salary as it was indicated on a line item chart, comparatively speaking to other department heads in our town. And he was being paid less than the people that he was managing as a department head. And Councilmember Dobbie and I did an analysis. We went to Realtors and did a rental comp survey to determine the value of giving that house to the city manager as part of the compensation package. And we determined that it was $5,000 a month net, which essentially before or after taxes, before taxes, would be in the range of $7,500 a month. And so that was factored in and shown and, you know, presented to the former city manager, who then felt better about his compensation package. who then felt better about his compensation package. So, we do not discount that. And just because the house currently is vacant, doesn't mean that it cannot be rented out and made a revenue source at more than the $5,000 a month that we would be offering to the city manager, or at this point, $2,500 a month, which is the offer on the table at this point, not the $5,000 a month quid pro quo of the value. So, I think it is a very fair offer, a compensation package. I would like to make a motion to...
What about the public comment first, before you have a motion?
Thought that I had opened it up.
No, I thought she...
Okay, thank you, I got confused. See, you're right. So, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
John Uzero.
Yes, sir.
Stockbridge Avenue. Everybody, look at their yellow sheet, including the lady of the press, please. And not, not think figures up above, look at the sentence, it says, please note, "The information filed on this document is preliminary in nature, subject to change by the respective agency at any time. Due to its preliminary draft form, it is recommended that requests for information retained on the salaries and benefits, information of individual positions referred on this document be referred to the respective agencies. The production of this document is not intended to serve a public purpose for distribution, as it is inherently subject to change and may be, as a result, inaccurate." No, that's not the end. Printed 25 days ago, and who was prepared by? Prepared by George Roderick, city manager of Atherton. Do you have that to me?
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Pardon?
I'm not with the press.
I know she is.
Yes, yes.
Lou Pappone's, 96 McBain Avenue. I see there is nothing but confusion in the four members of the council here as to what's going on in this particular issue. You have to be completely informed by the town attorney, and he's punching the figures that are different from what you're seeing. You're confused. You are not ready to vote or make any motion on this issue. And on the basis of the council's statement, that if the information has not been given to the people that are present, it shall be distributed to them at the time of the meeting. The council member came down here with papers that gave to the newspaper lady, and she distributed one for herself, one for John, and one for this gentleman, and when I asked for mine, there wasn't any. And on that basis, on the citizens' rights, I say that you have not informed me, and this issue cannot go forward, and you will have to take this up at a different time. Right or wrong, counselor?
We'd like to answer. With all due respect, you're wrong. And let me explain why.
I'd like to hear why.
Well, you asked a question, I'll tell you why. Because at the meeting, actually, I'm not a council member, I brought the, I brought the copies down that we had, and I passed, and I passed them to Renee, who said she would pass them out. I didn't hear anybody else ask for a copy, and, and there are a number of them floating around up here that couldn't have been made available. I thought that since you were sending this to John and he had one in his hands, it would be shared. But what we're, our requirement is, and it's an important one, that if information is presented by the agency at the meeting, that those items be given to the public as quickly as possible. I think we did that. Now...
Not to everyone, however, and that is part of the requirement.
We gave it to everyone.
Everyone present got the copy.
I was offered one, I didn't want one.
You asked me the, the question, Lou, I'll tell you. Everybody that I heard ask for one, got one. And you didn't ask for one that I, that I heard at all, I would have been happy to stop and have the city clerk go get them, go make more. I thought you were sitting with, in fact, you were sitting with John, and I thought, I saw you looking at his copy.
Have you read that type in there?
I haven't looked at it, no.
Take a look at it, you can't see it.
I gave you my copy, I didn't need it because the numbers that were presented tonight by the ad hoc committee, those are only comparisons of other agencies.
I challenge your decision, and I think that I can...
Then you join my, then you join my wife frequently, because she challenges that the same way. All I can tell you is, if you sit on your rights, you lose your rights. And they were passed out, in fact, one's sitting on your chair as we speak.
I'm not sitting on them, I'm standing on them. I asked that this issue be brought before us at an earlier time, and I was refused that right. So, I've waited until this hour, that is almost, what, 10:45, in order to speak on this issue, and I don't have all the information on the issue, then I'm wrong, I don't believe it.
The information on the issue was actually passed back and forth, I watched you and John sharing a copy.
So small, I even asked John if it was transportation.
That's, that's the same information the city council's looking at, and the problem is, they didn't use that information, per se, to come up with a number. The ad hoc committee suggested, in fact, the mayor suggested on behalf of the ad hoc committee, that the base salary be changed to a certain number. That number, by the way, I happen to know that recently, an adjacent city hired somebody for over $200,000. So, it certainly is within the range, and I know Hillsborough is $236,000, I believe.
But what's the population and what's the income?
It's similar. I'm going to, I'm going to close this, I'm going to close this.
That's the answer to the question.
Because I think that we're going around in circles. Lou, I really apologize that you, Lou, I really apologize that you didn't...
This gentleman wants to speak.
I'm going to, I'm going to let you speak, I'm just trying to, you know, finish with Mr. Pappone's. So, public comments, again, Mr. Pappone.
Let's go, John.
When was the original contract written?
October 2012.
That's less than six months?
Yes, yes.
And what is the rationale on the increase for six, after six?